Welcome, everyone. If you're here for a public comment, there's a sign-in sheet over next to that door, and we'd appreciate if you'd go ahead and sign in. And with that, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to regular business, and the first item is to consider a motion to issue a proclamation declaring March 18th as St. Patrick's Day in Minnehaha County. Sean Cleary, welcome.
Well, thank you. Top of the morning to y'all. Appreciate your continued service to our community and to our St. Patrick's Day parade. So, St. Patrick's Day proclamation of Ominnehaha County. Whereas we be Irish men and women all this day of national celebration at home in Ireland and homelands throughout the world, and whereas the joyous unity of St. Patrick's Day reminds us of all our shared heritage and membership in a global family, and whereas today we honor the patron saint of Ireland of his great message of love and peace to one another, and whereas celebrations are in order for an expression of culture and heritage in music, dance, poetry, games, and just a wee bit of green beer raised in the toast, and whereas green silliness abounds as you shed your troubles by the road for a chance of good cheer and awareness of the green, and then this we proclaim as guppertcons are dancing and the joy that's everywhere with luck as your companion, from deep in our hearts we treasure our strong community spirit and tradition of welcome and care for one another, and thank God for the Irish who gave us St. Pat to bring us together awareness of the green and shout and proclaim to the whole world as Irish on the 18th day of O-March dated the seventh day of the merry month of March 2023, signed by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners, Gene O'Bender, Chair, Dean O'Karski, Vice Chair, Gerald O'Benega, Gene O'Blyenberg, and Joe O'Kipli.
All right, well, thank you. I have to say, this is one of my favorite times of the year. It's the only time I get to sign. My name is Gene O'Bender, so I appreciate that. And I would like if you could also guarantee there won't be any snow on that weekend, but...
This could be a problem this year.
All right, so we have a motion. I would entertain a motion, I take that back.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks so much for coming this morning.
Thank you, Sean.
All right. Mm-hmm, thanks.
Take care, Sean.
Takes us to item 11, which is consider a resolution to establish the hourly rate of pay for Board of Mental Illness Lay Board members. Good morning.
Morning. I'm Erin Johnson, this is Tom Weirheim. We are co-chairs for the Board of Mental Illness, Minnehaha and Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness, and we're here today really just to answer some questions, if you have any questions, and to ask for an increase in pay for our lay board members. The pay for our lay board members is currently $32 an hour, and that was established 20 years ago. So Tom and I were in college at the time that that pay was established, and we're asking that you increase that to $64 an hour. We look for people who have experience in healthcare and other areas that might be helpful for our board. These are individuals that, in conjunction with us, determine whether someone is committed or released, and they use their own equipment. They use their own computers, their own paper, their own internet, their own phones, and they are required to be available on Fridays, Tuesdays, and Fridays. So Tuesday and Friday mornings for Minnehaha hearings, and they're typically available at, you know, they find out how many hearings we're going to have, how long this is going to take the night before. And so, we really, we really depend on them to be available every Tuesday and Friday morning. And sometimes we don't need them, and sometimes we have six hearings. So it just depends on the day. They, they're very good at what they do, and we really appreciate what they do, and we feel that they need to be compensated for the time that they're spending.
Anything else?
It's usually about, what, two to five hours a week, we figure, and, you know, just looking at this past, the past history, it looks like we've probably been underpaying for quite a while. We've just had a turnover in board members, so no one has really noticed, but it's finally come to a point where they should be reasonably compensated.
And you should know that we're saving money, because we used to all travel to behavioral health and have our hearings there, and now because of COVID, we've, we were forced to move to Zoom, and we just kept all the hearings by Zoom. So board members are actually spending less time than they were before.
So, we're talking about aggravated assaults, rapes, burglaries, robberies, stuff like that, and so we're still seeing the violent crimes. A good note along those lines, though, is that we're not seeing the number of direct file-able cases. Direct file-able cases are cases that if a youth is 16 years or older and commits a class A, B, C, one or two felony, so murder, manslaughter, rape first, burglary first, robbery first, we've, those have actually been down. We were averaging about five kids a day in direct file-able cases. Recently, we've been down more around one or two. So I take that as a win. It's not a great win, but we'll take it. And then out of those intake calls as well, abuse and neglect calls account for about 20% of those calls. So it's down just a little bit, but it's still a time-consuming process that doesn't put a kid directly into juvenile court for a delinquency or a chins-type offense, but it's kind of a precursor of what we're going to see in the future, probably. We had almost 100 more admissions in '22 as compared to '21, and, but our average daily population has been pretty much steady for the past four years. So we're kind of staying steady with the number of kids that we have on the, in there on a daily basis. So far this year, our numbers in 2023, January and February, our average daily population's been lower, but there's been a lot of weather that contributes to that. I expect once we see warmer weather and, and not the storms that are locking people down, we'll see our numbers get back to that normal range of around 28 to 30. The second thing I'd like to talk to you about is our mental health issues that we We had 24, 20, or, I'm sorry, our 24-hour mental health holds were down slightly by about six or seven. I would contribute that partially to the opening of Avera's new facility. We no longer are taking kids because of Avera's full. The kids that we do take, there's usually some kind of violence that's went along with the mental health issue that Avera is not comfortable holding, so then we end up with them for the 24 hours. The mental health board then gets involved, and they help us get the kid moving within 24 hours. The number of delinquent youth, though, that we're serving that are on, or have mental health issues and are on medications is probably close to 80% of the kids that we deal with. We recently had a young lady that came in that had 18 medications, and out of those 18, 12 of them were for mental health reasons, and those are medications that our staff are distributing throughout the day to these kids. I would say close to 80% of our kids are on some form of mental health medication. We're also seeing more serious suicide attempts. Two Fridays ago, we had one heck of a morning, we had two very close-to-successful suicide attempts, and we haven't seen anything like that in the nine years that I've been there. And I'd like to take just a second to show some appreciation. I have two of my staff here today, Lucinda Wilson and Caleb Liebel. They were the two that...
Those, and thank you very much for coming this morning, so that we can, sometimes we hear, hear about the hard work that you guys do, but we don't get to put a face with it, and so it's great to actually see you guys in person this morning. And Jamie, thanks for being here today. It'll be, it'll be another good, challenging year this year, as we kick off the Juvenile Justice Center, but we appreciate you taking the time to come this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 13, which is the first reading for rezoning number 23-01, and authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on March 28th, 2023, to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mason Stephan from the Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning Office. As explained, rezoning request 2301 has been submitted to rezone approximately 60 acres from the A1 Agriculture and RC Recreation Conservation Districts to the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. The location of the property, as you can see on the map here, is at the intersection of 257th Street and 473rd Avenue, and is approximately one and a half miles northeast of the Crook's Runner exit off of Interstate 29. Given that this request is proposing a change to the RR Rural Residential Zoning District, if approved, it would allow for the residential development and subdivision of the proposed property. Also, just for your information, the RR Rural Residential Zoning District has a minimum lot size of one acre, so given that this property is approximately 60 acres, if developed to that one acre, it could add up to 60 individual residential lots. However, as you can see on the screen, currently, the petitioner is only proposing a 25 to 30, depending on the final layout of the lots, subdivision with each lot being approximately one and a half acres. This request was heard by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission at their meeting on February 27th, 2023, and the Minnehaha County Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend denial of the rezoning request. However, that is only a recommendation, and the, this request must be heard by the full county commission for final action. Therefore, action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. That will be held on March 28th, 2023, at or after 9:00 AM at a meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. And as you've been seeing, as Trish has been scrolling through, there's a couple pictures of the property, but I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Mason? Is there anyone here today for public comment on this item? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion. Oh, Commissioner Karski.
No, I was going to make a motion to set the second reading for March 28th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second?
Adam, Chair.
Yes.
I do have a question, Mason.
Yeah.
Under the recommendation, I just would like more information on this, if not today, maybe on March 28th, but it reads that staff finds the proposed rezoning is contrary to the goals and policies of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan. I don't recall the 25, or the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan. Can you get us copies of that so that we can see what that is?
Sure.
And maybe even update on when it was passed, or who passed it, and how it was formulated, that type of thing. I'm sure I've seen it before, I just don't remember it.
Yep, I can get that to you before the second reading.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. So that takes us to item 14, which is the first reading of ordinance amendment number 23-01, and to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider a text amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance to Minnehaha County. Scott?
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. Today, I'm bringing forth an item for you to consider. This would be a setting a hearing date for also March 28th, 2023. This would be specifically on a text amendment, which would revise our zoning ordinance. This text amendment deals with short-term rentals and vacation homes. This is something that we have seen the nature of this type of rental accommodations change throughout the years. The zoning ordinance is, we're proposing to update and revise our zoning ordinance to better deal with, with how we evaluate and how we permit these type of short-term rentals or vacation rentals. So this would add short-term rentals and vacation home rentals as a conditional use permit in several districts, the rural residential, the agriculture district, the R1, which is residential district, and the RC recreational conservation district. So within those four zoning districts, it would be a conditional use permit. Then the proposed ordinance also amends Article 12, and it would set up or would add a new section that specifically identifies how the, how the county is going to evaluate and deal with these type of, this type of use, short-term rentals. It would outline the occupancy that we would like to see for, you know, based on each bedroom. It would set up some parking requirements. It would also establish the need or the requirement for the owner, owner-manager information to be played, to be within the short-term use or vacation home rental, and also make sure that that information's provided to the county, so we have, we're able to also know who to contact, because sometimes the property owner is not the person that's managing these parcels. And then lastly, it creates a definition for what a short-term rental or vacation home is. So that is a synopsis of, of the, of the request. The planning, I will let you know that the Planning Commission gave this some good consideration. We had some discussions in October, November, and then we had October, November. They felt we were able to, we were at the point that we could proceed. We had a public hearing in, in, in January, I guess, no, February, I'm trying to think it's March. So we, we also discussed this in January, and they've authorized us to, the planning staff, to publish a hearing notice for February, and we did that. We had a public hearing in, at our Planning Commission meeting in February. We had a significant amount of people that came and testified, we had a lot of input, a lot of good discussion, which I also will tell you, we had a lot of input and discussion at our January and November meetings as well. So this has been a, a topic of interest within the community, and I continue to see this being a use that is going to grow, that we will need to accommodate and be able to better deal with and authorize and regulate and permit. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but today I'm asking you to, once again, authorize the auditor to publish the hearing notice for the formal request, or for the formal hearing on, second reading on March 28th at this meeting.
Commissioner Benega.
Scott, how would this ordinance affect homeowners' associations?
Well, it would, it would create the use, as I indicated, it would, it would not negate any kind of deed restrictions or restrictive covenants. That would be a legal civil matter that those property owners within that homeowners' association would have to read their covenants and make their determination whether it's a allowable use or not, because you are right, Commissioner Benega, this may be a use that is precluded in restrictive covenants, and that is not something that the county is a party to. We don't enforce, we don't enforce private covenants that are placed on, on properties.
Commissioner Karski.
Scott, it's under 1217B, it says the vacation home, short-term rental shall register with the state of South Dakota as a vacation home. Who at the state level is managing or this list, or what do you know about that? It's first I've heard of it, that's why I'm curious.
Well, so my recollection is like, I believe it's 2006, 2007, there was a, a lot of discussion within the state about vacation homes, and, and it primarily was coming out of the Black Hills, and the, the way it is set up, the Department of Health regulates that, so they, there's basically a registry, and there's some criteria that they need to follow through the state, and that, that is in there, that wording is in the ordinance, so that people are aware that there might be another level that they need to comply with.
Okay. Now, the ordinance is short, it's sweet, it's simple, I like it, thank you.
Well, it's trying, and, and there was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission about, you know, do we need to have security plans and fencing requirements, and that all can be looked at and evaluated individually through the conditional use permit process, because you may not, I mean, there was some discussion about, well, we should have a security fence around the entire property, but if it's a 40 or 50 or 60-acre parcel, it's like a farmstead, you may not want to have a six-foot security, privacy fence around the entire parcel. So the way it's, the way it's set up is through the conditional use permit process, each individual conditional use can be evaluated, and there may, it allows the Planning Commission and County Commission to add conditions if needed that may better help it blend into the neighborhood, maybe landscaping, I mean, there could be a lot of things that you may need to help it blend into the neighborhood.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Is there anyone here today for public comment on this item? All right, seeing none.
I'd make a motion to authorize the auditor publish the notice of hearing for March 28th.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Scott. That takes us to item 15, which is to authorize the chair to sign the third amendment to the Joint Public Safety Answering Point PSAP agreement with the city of Sioux Falls. State's attorney's putting on his other hat and running to the mic.
Sorry, not running, but yes, I was, we were slowly getting up. Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office. Unfortunately, we are here to ask for a third extension or amendment to the PSAP agreement. Little history, the city of Sioux Falls is building a new law enforcement training facility, part of that facility will include the metro communications equipment and facility. The county's contribution to that process is a payment of $2.15 million. That extend, payment deadline has been extended previously a couple times in conjunction with discussions with the city to make other arrangements which would potentially alleviate the county's responsibility to make that payment. Part of that has required some changes in background information on some real estate that the county owns. We just yesterday received some good news from the title company that those previous title objections from, by the city have now been alleviated, everything appears to be ready to go forward. City had asked that that date be extended, not just into April, but into May, just to make sure that we don't have to come back and ask for a fourth extension. So that's, all this does is to move the county's payment date, assuming that this other arrangement doesn't actually go through fruition, out to May 30th. So if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any question?
We still have snow.
Well, there may be a pile. That was an interesting story on the news this morning, that may still be there in July, but...
Well, that's a happy thought, so. Anybody have any other questions? Anybody on public comment? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the amendment.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Takes us to item 16, which is Sioux Empire Fair Parking Lot Liquidated Damages. Carol Mueller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Before you today is a request to authorize the payment of $25,900 to the Sioux Empire Fair Association for lost revenue due to parking lot construction delays. Last year, you know, and as we know, construction's been a devil of a project for many things that are out there. Last year, our facilities director had bid out and coordinated that the parking lot to the east of the grandstand was to be micro-sealed, resurfaced, striped, all the things that go along into it. And just due to delays and amount of work and supplies and everything like that, that project got delayed out. It was supposed to be done earlier in the summer so that several events could be held at the park, on that parking lot that was rental income for the fair association. It ended up just being done two or three days before the local fair happened. So the county did receive, did deduct liquidated damages from the amount of money that we went through and paid. I asked the fair association to put together a list of the amount of money that they lost through events, and if we can just scroll down one page, I would ask Trish to do that, is the list of items that totaled $25,900. I know I talked at one point to the facilities director, and I said, hey, is this something we should just put off till next year? The concern was that the damage was sufficient enough that if we waited another year, we probably would have had to churn that whole parking lot up, which would have gone from hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars. So with that, the request is for those liquidated damages that we did not pay to then be brought forward to replace the lost income for the fair association.
All right, any questions for Carol? Any public comment on this item? If not...
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right. Takes us to the next item, which is a legislative update. Good morning, Tyler.
Good morning, Tyler Clow, Commission Office. Short update for today, as most of the items we've been watching have either been deferred to the 41st day or signed, this update attached to the packet goes through March 2nd, which kind of isn't as useful as it could be. A lot of stuff has happened since then. The highlights that I wanted to point out, House Bill 1098, which would have increased juror compensation, was deferred to the 41st day. How, if you've been following the property tax versus food tax, House Bill 1141 has become an issue for us to watch, as it would increase, or would create a $425 property tax credit that the Department of Revenue would send out to all owner-occupied, single-family dwellings. The, and I believe that is in, that is in a conference committee right now, so that's where that is at currently. Senate Bill 4, which would increase the amount of offenses that a juvenile would be able to be sentenced, or not sentenced, but committed to the Department of Corrections, that has been passed in the House and passed the Senate as well. Senate Bill 74 failed in the House, and that was the bill that would have created the ability to create regional jail facilities. And Senate Bill 155, which was to create a fund to finance projects for jails and juvenile facilities, also failed in the House of Representatives. Don't know great news today, but if you have any questions, I can try to answer those.
Questions for Tyler? Legislative session is always interesting, so is there any public comment on any legislation? All right, if not, that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today for public comment? I think some of you may have walked in after I mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, but if you are here to speak for public comment, if you can just make sure you sign in at the sign-in sheet over there. You. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Arnie Erickson, 48494, 260th Street, Valley Springs, South Dakota. We farm kind of northwest of Valley Springs. There are 229,287 miles of hazardous liquid pipelines in the United States. About 2.2 or 5,100 miles of those are CO2 pipelines, currently the most in the world. The vast majority, above 90% of CO2 pipelines are used for enhanced oil recovery. At least 80% of CO2 in the pipes comes from high pressure, high purity, natural geological underground domes. The 5,100 miles of CO2 pipelines are much shorter than our proposed pipelines. They include the Cortez 502 miles, Sheep Mountain 408, Bravo 218, and the rest... eight, Bravo, two eighteen, and the rest of them are just short ones. A much touted twenty-twenty Princeton University, University study, which was partially funded by oil industry, calls for sixty-five thousand miles of CO2 pipelines by twenty-fifty. Sixty-five thousand miles of pipeline could only move about fifteen percent of current CO2 emissions. To have any effect on climate change, it would require two point six million miles of pipeline. The safety of CO2 pipelines falls under the regulation of U S D O T Pipeline Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, according to the U S Department of Energy. Safety includes technical design of the pipeline, construction and operation. The I C C has no oversight, oversight of CO2 pipelines. According to the U S Department of Energy, oversight of the siting and eminent domain for pipeline is responsibility of states. In South Dakota, the responsibility for siting resides with counties, not P U C. CO2 pipelines have about twice the number of incident reports compared to natural gas lines. After the twenty-twenty Sotarsia, Mississippi incident investigation, the conclusion was current regulations for CO2 pipelines are incomplete, inadequate, and put the public at risk. The Environmental Justice Advisory Council stated carbon capture infrastructure is an example of projects that are not good for our communities. We are asking many County Commission to stand up and protect residents through our notices. Navigator Pipeline goes through two miles, right through the, two miles where we farm, and it goes right past my son's house. And the current regulations could put that fifty feet from his home, where my grandkids live. So we need some help here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Morning.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Kay Burkhardt. I'm from Valley Springs, South Dakota. I would like to share a few interesting facts about the CO2 pipeline rupture that happened in Sotarsia, Mississippi, to send, to shed some light on what might be in store for us when the CO2 pipelines come to Minnehaha County without any ordinances in place. The CO2 pipeline near Sotarsia was owned by Denberry Gulf Coast Pipelines. They boasted that they own thirteen hundred miles of CO2 pipelines, and the most that any company has in the world at that time. The CO2 in their pipelines is a combination of natural and industrial sources. Denberry's pipeline in Sotarsia incident was only seventy-seven miles long. That's about one fifteenth of what the pipeline that they're proposed here. It was installed in two thousand and nine and used for enhanced oil recovery. On February twenty-second of two thousand and twenty, this relatively new pipeline ruptured. It was not Denberry's first rupture. It also ruptured in November of two thousand and eighteen from thermal stress caused by the CO2 loading at different sites concurrently. Denberry records showed that they had two to three incidents per year with their CO2 pipelines. The rupture that affected Sotarsia occurred on the northeast side of Highway four thirty-three. The pipe was tunneled thirty feet under the highway, or, yeah, thirty feet under the highway. The rupture created a forty-foot crater beside the highway. An inspection of the highway determined that it was at risk, and so the highway was closed. Pipeline closing gates on either side of the rupture functioned perfectly. The gates were nine and a half miles apart, which is half the distance that they will be on our proposed pipeline. Contents of the pipe continued to vent for several hours and filled the forty-foot crater. Once the crater was full, the gas continued one mile over a hill and into the town of Sotarsia. Denberry's modeling showed Sotarsia would not be affected by a rupture. Therefore, the first responders for that area never received any training or equipment for a CO2 rupture. They were unprepared. Denberry's been around for a long time and touted their unparalleled CO2 management experience. The Sotarsia rupture occurred on February twenty-second of two thousand and twenty. Denberry filed for, Denberry filed for Chapter eleven bankruptcy on July thirtieth and exited bankruptcy on July, on September fifteenth of that same year. Denberry was fined by F E M S A, but due to the bankruptcy, there is a question of whether the fines were ever paid. The, most of the affected people in Sotarsia have yet to receive any compensation. The most severely affected have become dependent on the state of Mississippi, of Mississippi, and the easement agreements have been erased with the bankruptcy. Since two thousand and nine, the Department of Energy has doled out over one billion dollars to carbon capture and, carbon capture demonstration projects for six different coal plants. Only one was built and started operating before closing in two thousand and twenty. The process was too costly in energy and water. The current rush is to build CO2 pipelines now is due to the forty-five Q tax credits. The CO2 pipelines of the type proposed for our area, for Minnehaha County, have never been built anywhere, and they are being built by companies that have never built or managed CO2 pipelines. The citizens of Minnehaha County need your help. We deserve reasonably, reasonable protection from the CO2 pipelines being forced on us by private companies. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Can I get the projector to work? Please. And it'll be less than five minutes too, so. Anyway, we're waiting. My name is Dan Nelson. I'm from Valley Springs, South Dakota. On my farm, my family farm, third generation, so. My subject will be about the Navigator Pipeline. Okay. So you're probably all aware that the Palisades State Park has expanded and grown a lot, and they're still working on that project. Their new expansion is all of this land here. The new entrance will be here on two hundred and fifty-sixth Street.
Please speak into the mic, please.
All right. Sorry about that. Two hundred and fifty-sixth Street is where the new entrance will be. The existing park is up here. There is gonna be eighty, some new campsites here. I own the pasture across the road to the west, Highway one, across Highway one oh nine. So. I drew in. This is your, I drew in the new campsites here of the Palisades, so. Struggling with this here. Okay, the pipeline is gonna, there's a dotted line right here, and it's gonna come down, and then it'll cross my property right here. Okay? And when I, when they approached me to, early on, when they approached me to, um, see if, you know, tell me about, they wanted to cross my land, I gave them permission to go out there and, and, and survey, because when they saw that quartzite rock, like the Palisades has, that they're not, they're gonna go somewhere else, 'cause it's no problem, you know? So I got a response back from them, and they said, no, that's no problem at all, we can bore that. So here's north, right here. So here's a split rock creek. And they're gonna bore under the railroad, and it's about a thirty-foot drop, and they're gonna bore under the railroad, under the split rock, and come up the other side, it's about twelve hundred and fifty feet through quartzite. They butt weld the pipes together, and then they're gonna slime them through that hole and come up the other side. I think that if there's ever a chance of that thing leaking, it's gonna be there, 'cause of the stress of the curved pipe hole and whatever, but this, this, um, this thing here is thirty-eight hundred feet from the new campsites. A ten mile an hour southwest wind travels eight hundred and eighty feet a minute. It'll be there, if it leaks here, it'll be there with a southwest wind in four and a half minutes as it crow flies, and it'll also continue on to the existing camp. I talked to the park, they have not had any notification or training on how to handle a CO2 leak. You know, their people are gonna be in it too, as long as, as well as all their guests, so I hope, we need some help with this. It, it needs to be in a less populated area, and the other, the other pipeline too, is, it's not fit for around Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right. You know, if you want, you can come up now during public comment, I was thinking you might come up during non-action commission items. Thank you. All right. Think it might be a little more appropriate there. That takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Is there any Commissioner Liaison Reports this morning? All right. Now, it's non-action commission discussion, and we have, the State's Attorney's Office would like to update us on the possible grant option.
Thank you so much. Good morning Commissioners, my name is Amy Folsom, and I am a Deputy State's Attorney, assigned to the Civil Division, so I have the privilege of working for Mr. Boge. Thanks for having us today. So State's Attorney Dan Hager sent an email to you all yesterday, I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to review it, but the purpose of my comments today are simply to update you on some of the plans we have at the State's Attorney's Office specifically for combating inter, intimate partner violence that we're seeing an uptick in here in our community. State's Attorney provided some details, but I'll, I'll start with the background a little bit. We are seeing nationally an uptick in violent crimes, and unfortunately, our community is not immune to that. We're seeing the same uptick in the metrics that we're getting from S F P D, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office, and as well as in our own stats that we're seeing. A few years ago, violent felonies made up about twenty-six percent of our caseload. That number, just in the last few years, has increased to about thirty-five percent. So again, our internal statistics are supporting some of what we're seeing nationwide as well. With respect to intimate partner violence, or what was previously kind of more colloquially, term domestic violence, we have seen a one hundred and thirty-five percent increase in the last four years alone. So it's no secret that intimate partner violence is prevalent. It's certainly no secret that it happens in our community. So it is no secret that, that if, you know, we're upholding our responsibility to the community, that we need to be seeking the best strategies we can for combating that interpersonal violence. So I'm here to talk to you about a couple of tranches of funds that the State's Attorney has asked staff to look into that may assist us with getting additional personnel and resources to, to fight these types of crimes that have little or no, or minimal impact to our general fund budget. So the first one we were made aware of is a tranche of money that came, comes from the State Department of Public Safety. And this tranche of money originates with the Federal Department of Justice. Department of Justice gives it to the states for the purpose of having the states disperse it out to prosecutors, law enforcement agencies, and courts, again, for the express purpose of, of enhancing our local strategies. So our proposal, that's, it's not being made today, this is simply for purposes of updating you, our proposal will come in the next couple of weeks to seek funding from that state tranche of money for one F T E, a victim witness assistant. So our goal with this victim witness assistant would be to join a larger team, and I'll talk about that in a second, but be someone who could respond more quickly to those offenders who have been previously identified as high-risk to reoffend, right? We've got people who are committing multiple crimes and/or high-risk for lethality, people who have, you know, prior violent offenses that suggest to us that the next one might result in a homicide. So our goal would be to have this person specifically assigned to these types of cases to be able to respond more quickly after incidents, again, to those identified offenders. The salary we're proposing is around sixty-one thousand dollars. There is a twenty-five percent match for these state funds, which is estimated to be just over twenty-one thousand dollars. The state position, this victim witness assistant, assistant position is yearly, so we would have to seek to renew the position annually, that's one downside of this particular grant opportunity. We do have information, however, from other jurisdictions, that this money has consistently flowed from the feds, and other jurisdictions have been able to renew their positions over the course of ten years and more. So we are confident that if we, if we get these funds and, and we set reasonable goals and we meet the measurable goals that we do, that we'll be able to continue funding for this position. So in that context, I want to talk to you about another tranche of funds that we are in discussions with the Attorney General's Office, potentially to have some of those funds flow to our State's Attorney's Office. Historically, the state of South Dakota has applied directly with the Office of Violence Against Women to receive about a million dollars in funds. And my understanding is they've done that over the course of seven years, and those funds have funded positions across the state, some prosecutors, some investigators, and other positions. That grant application under our former Attorney General, our former Attorney General decided not to renew it, decided not to go forward. So we have approached Mr. Jackley about a concept of renewing that grant, seeking those funds for the state of South Dakota, and potentially having more of a Minnehaha County focus to those efforts. So our longer-term goal, that solicitation, that federal solicitation hasn't come from the feds yet, but our longer-term goal would be to work with the Attorney General's Office to also fund an additional prosecutor here in this office, as well as an investigator, for the express purpose of having a prosecutor, an investigator, this victim witness assistant, providing a coordinated community response with S F P D, the Sheriff's Office, and other community partners to really provide strategic targeted efforts towards this problem. So that's what will be coming to you in the next couple of weeks. The state grant application is due March fifteenth. So the purpose again here is, is for me to provide you that information. If you formally decline, if you say, no, we don't want you to make application for those state funds, we'll simply withdraw our application. What questions can I answer?
Any questions this morning? Commissioner Benega?
Yes, sir.
I read this late last night, so I may be a little fuzzy from what I understood, but it said the grant application is due March fifteenth. But you're not asking us to approve it until the twenty-first?
That's correct. Unfortunately, we were a little late to the game and didn't get it noticed up for formal approval today.
So will that have any negative effect on the request?
I don't believe so, sir. My, my information now is that we don't need to have formal approval by the board to apply. Certainly, if we are awarded the funds, this board will have to approve acceptance of the funds.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just as a point of clarification on that as well, that we, it will come before the board and not, since we don't meet next week, not next week, but the following week, if that time we decide we don't want them to pursue it any further, they'll just simply withdraw their application.
withdraw their application.
Gotcha, but...
It was a timing issue.
I said it was real late last night, so I was a little foggy.
Well, it's a little confusing. It just, it was, the timing was difficult, so...
Thank you. Nothing better than having two opinions from attorneys.
That's what most people say, Gerald.
Anything else from the commission on questions? I know the State's Attorney's available if you have further questions. Think of things later. Reread your memo when you're not, when it's not quite so late.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So, any other non-action commission items? All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn for executive session immediately following the commission meeting for purposes of SDCL. I don't have to say all of that right now. But anyway, right now, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We will have an executive session.
So, second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Why don't we try to reconvene for executive session?